Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here, thank you. And then we're going to move on to item three. And steps.
Reboot the draft fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six capital improvement program budget and provide direction for final adoption on June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. First, we're gonna have an introduction from our public works director, Director Lee, and then there's going to be going to four, four other presenters is going to council colleagues. It's gonna be about a half an hour or so, and then we're gonna hold all our questions until the end. So with that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Matt Lee, the Public Works Director. I'm excited to be here today to discuss our capital improvement program for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Oftentimes, people seem to assume that CIP is delivered solely by public works, but it's actually a group effort for different departments in the city to come together. We've got our infrastructure and the variety of different places for different categories. This year, we're gonna try to do something a little bit different. What we're gonna do is I'm gonna pull the veil back a little bit more and have my team that there's some CIP kind of certain elements of the CIP themselves and finance help us with the financial component. And this is kind of just to highlight the the effort that it takes to kind of bring the CIP together by developing it and like. And so with that, I'll start first with having the power mix I brought up, and I will introduce Ryan Adam, our assistant to the city manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Sorry about that. I hope you'll bear with us as I may have to move between here and there just to make sure that you see what we see on the screen. As Public Works Director Matt Lee noted, we'll just be providing you a presentation of the proposed draft for the capital improvement plan and just give you a rundown of some of the material we're covering. So one, we'll give you a review of the prioritization program that you approved last year that went into effect in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. And so that was used to solicit and prioritize some of the projects that were part of this proposal. Then we'll go through the CIP overview, which will just cover basically the numbers, what's the impact of the funds, what are the projects? And then we will get a presentation from Public Works on CIP and how resources are allocated across the department or Public Works department for the CIP. That being said, the objective of this meeting is basically to, one, have present this draft to you. Two, provide some information on the allocation. And then, three, provide any feedback that will be incorporated into the budget and CIP hearing later in June. That being said, I now want to hand it off to my colleague in Public Works, Anna Morales, who'll provide you a kind of review of the CIP prioritization program.
Good evening, Anna Morales, management analyst with Public Works, and tonight I'm gonna give you a review of our CIP prioritization pilot program. So in January two thousand twenty-four, City Council approved a CIP prioritization framework designed to refine how we recommend capital improvement projects. This approved framework is based on ten objective criteria within a sign point system, which includes equity, health and safety issues, asset condition, economic prosperity, environment, strategic initiative, mandates, funding, collaboration, and shovel readiness. So the pilot also includes an annual CIP timeline with milestones, including project nominations accepted beginning in October, the budget development and council priorities meeting in January, the CIP study session in April, budget approval in June, and budget implementation in July. So in to formalize the new CIP framework, staff created a policy and procedural guide, a video explaining the factors, and a submission website for city council members and staff to nominate their CIP projects. In fall two thousand twenty-four, the pilot was approved for implementation as part of the FY two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget process, and the online submission form was rolled out to staff and city council members, resulting in twenty CIP project nominations. In January two thousand twenty-five, the prioritized project list was presented to city council, and today the finalist of recommended projects is being presented as part of the CIP study session. Looking forward, we hope to further refine and continue with this prioritization process for future CIP budgets as it ensures that our decisions are equitable, data-driven, and aligned with community priorities. Thank you, and I'll pass it back to Ryan.
All right. With that being said, I'll just return to providing you the overview of the CIP, mostly focusing on the financial stuff. And hopefully, a more detailed breakdown of each of the proposed projects will be forthcoming to council. For the CIP budget at glance, including the mid-year requests that council approved last and a regular city council meeting last month, the CIP amended budget is at one hundred and seventy-two million, actual spends are around sixty-nine million, and for the proposed projects before you today, it comes out to roughly thirty-four point five million. For that, for the breakdown of how that goes by funds, this pie chart kind of shows where those funds are, the majority of being in air-based funds, water and wastewater, and then the other half being measure two funds. So although those funds are forthcoming once those the tranche is sold, but kind of anticipation of that, this is the proposed spending that will eventually be reimbursed by the sale of those tranches down the line. So for the more detailed kind of breakout for measure two, based on prior discussions with council and the feedback, basically seventy percent of that will be going towards streets, the majority of part is a part of our pavement program going into the next fiscal year. And then for stormwater projects related to compliance and revamping our stormwater drain master plan, and then also other projects related to stormwater capture, and then facilities projects related to the replacement of Fire Station fifty-two. But going back, here we have a pie chart showing the breakdown of the proposed spending for CIP projects per program with the biggest increase or the biggest proposal being for streets because measure two provides all these funds that we intend to use or propose to use in streets for the pavement management program. And now, just summarizing here, the mid-year adjustments that were made to the budget specifically focusing on capital improvement projects. So I think only a couple of these were technically new projects that were part of the amended budget, one of those being the Stormdrain project that's at the top of the table, and then also the technology project, the rack, community room update, and eating room updates. So those two projects were technically new projects that were part of the amended budgets, and then this, the rest of the projects are existing projects that received budget increases in one of the city councils' regular meetings last month. That brings me to requests for the coming fiscal year for existing projects. So this is a real test of, is this readable or not? So we have some facilities projects spanning things like the update to the city office workspace, parks projects, covering things like fire, wildfire mitigation, and as well as streets projects related to traffic signal improvements. And then for wastewater projects and water projects, all related to capital maintenance. And for the new requests, I think, again, I'm sorry that it's kind of difficult to read, but these projects span things ranging from improvements to dark parks or the conceptual design for updating Commodore Park and landscaping the back of the rack because every landscape is a back rack, and as mentioned before, the pavement management project for using those measure two funds. And then just wanted to highlight, so those different projects highlighted in the box there spanning both streets and stormwater are the measure two projects. So again, related to the Stormdrain Master Plan, different improvements related to stormwater, and then also the pavement management program. And then just highlighting that for that large chunk in the pavement management program, also including some other funds in addition to measure two, so it wasn't fully funded through measure two. And I don't know. Steamroll through that overview, but now I want to hand it over to colleague Dahlia Manoyes from Public Works to provide an overview of our resource allocation for the capital improvement program.
Thank you, Brian. Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and, I'm sorry, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Dahlia Manoyes, and I am the Principal Civil Engineer for the Public Works Engineering in the CIP Division. I've been a little bit about myself. I've been in Public Works for about eight years now. And during my early days here, we managed and delivered most projects in-house. As the number of projects grew and as regulatory requirements became more complex and demanding, our internal resources became very limited. So actually, at one point in time, we were operating at about seven percent vacancy rate. So in order to continue delivering critical capital improvement projects, we began consulting, we did consultants to help fill the gaps. As the Principal Civil Engineer overseeing the CIP division, I provide support to our evolving project delivery approach alongside our staff and also consultants to keep our projects on track. So today I will be sharing an overview of our current resources. So today I will be sharing an overview of our current resources, the lessons we've learned as we've been utilizing consultants to provide project management support, and what's been proposed for our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget to continue meeting on project delivery goals. So CIP staff are currently managing about sixty-four active projects with engineers averaging about ten projects each. So these are projects that include, that are include support by consultants. So all consultants assist with project management, in-house staff remain responsible for oversight, coordination, decision-making, and project budget. In addition to managing ten projects each, engineers also support regulatory compliance, emergency response, planning, budgeting, and public lead reviews. Based on internal experience and what other cities are practicing, engineers can sustainably manage, on average, six projects. Consistently exceeding the limit impacts project quality, staff role being, and service delivery. To maintain balance and continue delivering critical infrastructure projects, additional engineering resources are needed. So our engineers are currently managing around eight projects each on average, and this exceeds the recommended best practices of six projects per engineer. So around twenty-one, twenty-two, the engineering division was operating with a seventy percent vacancy rate, as I mentioned earlier. This created an urgent need for consultant support to keep critical infrastructure moving forward. Consultants provided essential expertise, technical expertise and flexibility at a time when internal staffing was significantly limited. Since then, we've successfully hired a number of several talented engineers, and this allowed us to increase our ability to manage more projects in-house. So while continuing to use consultants for specialized support and during workloads, right? So what have we learned? What have we observed during this time using utilizing consultants to help manage projects and also permanent staff? So one of the advantages of having consultants onboard is that they can be onboarded quickly for urgent or short-term needs, and also flexibly dispelled resources with workload demands. Some of the disadvantages include they cannot fulfill administrative supervisory or broader city functions, they lack institutional knowledge and long-term commitment, and oversight is required. Some of the advantages of having permanent staff in-house delivering projects is that they can provide continuity, ownership, and institutional knowledge, they are better suited for public engagement and internal coordination. And some of the disadvantages, it requires a longer hiring timeline compared to consultants. So if we had, say, a very large project or a project that needed to have a project manager assigned, it would, we would be able to do, hire a consultant more quickly than hiring someone that is not staff because of the onboarding process. This slide represents a three-year cost comparison between consultant project management support and permanent in-house staff. And it covers a period from about twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. During this time, consultants supported approximately thirty-one capital improvement projects, most of which are still underway. The support provided was equivalent to about six full-time project engineers. While consultants played a critical role during a time when engineering division was operating with a vacancy of seventy percent, in-house staff were still required to provide oversight, including decision-making, defining projects, so managing budgets, coordinating with other departments, and ensuring compliance with city standards. As shown here, the cost of using consultants, and this includes consultant fees and staff oversight, is estimated around twelve million dollars, whereas the estimated cost for the same level of effort using permanent staff would have been seven million dollars, resulting in a potential savings of five million dollars. This analysis highlights the importance of continuing to invest in permanent staffing to manage projects more cost-effectively while maintaining consistency, quality, and accountability. This slide focuses on the CIP division, showing the current organizational structure that supports the city's infrastructure project delivery. So this chart has actually evolved over the past years and also evolving at present time in response to staff onboarding, shifting project demands, and adjustments made to the operational needs. There's a lot going on in this chart, so what I'm going to do is dissect it, starting from the management section in orange. Okay, so the orange section includes the the management team. It includes the Principal Engineer who oversees the CIP program at a high level. They are responsible for program-wide, program-wide planning, resource allocation, interdepartmental coordination, management-level decision-making. At this time, the Principal CIP is managing a large number of staff, as you can see here in the overall picture, which makes it challenging to focus on core management duties such as strategic planning, quality assurance, and policy oversight. So in the blue section, we have our supervisors, and this includes our senior engineers. They assign them to view the work of project engineers and technicians, they manage complex capital projects, coordinate with consultants, and support regulatory compliance. Their leadership is critical to maintaining daily project planning working and staff development. And then here you see in the green section, this is the core execution team. This is where we have our army of troops working very hard to deliver over sixty projects with a with a multimillion-dollar budget. And these projects are related to improving our storm, street, water, and sewer infrastructure. They are the engineers and the inspectors who manage design, construction, and daily project delivery. They also provide critical field presence, oversee consultants to ensure alignment with city goals, and regularly interact with the project team and public to address the wide range of concerns, including traffic, pedestrian access, and CIP planning-related questions. And here in the gray section, we have our consultants who are used to support technical work and project delivery, especially during times when we're when we have load spikes. However, they still do require in-house staff oversight for decisions, coordination, and adherence to city standards. Also, consultants cannot fulfill supervisory, administrative, and policy setting goals. And then next in the chart, we have our our support team, which our technical support team, which includes our engineering assistants, who are part-time temporary. Okay, so this organizational snapshot underscores the need to rebalance workflows, particularly at the supervisory and management roles to maintain service, quality, support junior staff, and reduce reliance on consultants for ongoing operations. And this slide shows the proposed CIP staffing. The proposed, the proposal includes adding a senior engineer to oversee more complex projects. And then you see the one senior here in the blue section. There are no proposed changes in the management section, however, here in the supervisor section, we have a senior engineer to oversee more complex projects, also to support design oversight and in the green section, an associate engineer is also proposed to serve as a team lead and manage projects more efficiently. Both positions will assist junior-level staff and provide guidance, leadership, and support. These additions are intended to strengthen internal capacity, improve workload balance, enhance design and construction quality control, and enable more projects to be managed in-house. Consultants will continue to be utilized for specialized technical expertise and to supplement capacity during peak workflows. To continue delivering critical infrastructure projects effectively, we are proposing the addition of one senior engineer and one associate engineer to strengthen the internal capacity, improve supervision, support junior staff, and also enhance the design and construction quality control, increase public responsiveness, reduce long-term reliance on consultants, and result in cost savings. Additionally, the new positions will be funded by CIP projects and enterprise funds and not the general fund. So with that, I will go ahead and hand this over to Ryan.
All right. And that brings us back to the recommendations, asking the city council to receive this draft budget, to receive the CIP resource allocation information, and then also to provide feedback and guidance regarding any updates to this for the public hearing in June. And with that, I need staff or available for any questions from city council.
Well, thank you to everybody who presented, because I was told about thirty minutes, and always better to be ahead of schedule and behind, so thank you very much for. I know it was collaborative effort, working on it together, going through some prior runs, and so I appreciate the embrace, so thank you. Now, first I can say, seeing that there is no public comment, that that, turn it back to colleagues for questions, and it'll be directed through Director Lee, and he or he'll select a person that he wishes to have respond in some, so. Questions, and no comments. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation, everybody. It's clearly been a very busy time in San Bruno. The public isn't used to so much construction. Of all the paving that's being done, of all the sewer work, more work, there's more complaints about parking and everything, but I wanted to acknowledge that and also remind the public, whenever I get an opportunity online, but no, it's a lot of work, and you can't rebuild a street without impacting the parking and making noise, and sometimes the ground shakes a little bit too, so. I was hoping to get a little bit more detail on the status of the twenty-four, twenty-five projects, like where those that we completed, those that kind of maybe, I'm not sure where they all are at. And I don't know if we're gonna get more detail on the ideas that are being presented, like one of them that I have is what remains to be done in the city office. And that, and that list was there for a short amount of time, and I saw it in the packet, I mean, in the report, staff reports, and it was like, you know, it's like not very much information, and it's a lot of work. And I feel like I don't have a better grasp of what the work's being done because it's not being, there's not enough details in it, and it's not that I ever trust that, that how do we explain to the public that what we're doing in this budget, and I want to be able to really embrace that and get to say, you know, this is the things that we're doing, and right now I can't do that.
Good question. I think the, thank you for the comment. There is a lot of work going on. And we recently just hired in one of the, one of the senior engineers, and they're heavily, they heavily have experienced construction. As we've been transitioning from pipeline projects that were, let's just say, in design, that pipelines coming through into construction, and residents are gonna start to feel a lot more construction going on than they thought before. As part of this process, one of the things that the management team does is actually build up the pipeline to ensure we have a healthy balance of projects from design to construction, so we don't have too much going on at once. Obviously, there was a backlog from the pandemic era, and seventy percent agency that were trying to push through because the community has desired for us to pursue CIP projects, and so we're doing that, and so there will be some after effects felt there. In response to your question to the project scopes, those typically will be shared in the CIP budget. And we can do that in terms of the amount of projects that we've completed from one year to the next. We can, we can answer that, and also digest it.
So yes, that'll be very impactful. And as we're, this is the proposed CIP or draft. It's, when it comes to our final approval, I'm hoping that to be able to give some more information to have a better understanding the work that, the work that I'm going through. So I speak only for myself. So, yeah. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Thank you, thank you, thanks to the team for the, for the, or I had the same concern. I, I thought we were gonna see the actual, you know, the actual draft form of the CIP budget, and it had the first version of our, of our agendas, and this this attachment that's heavy and it's like very, so I have the same concern because, you know, seeing all of these, these projects, especially the stormwater ones, where we haven't been able to really get, get a lot done besides just keeping the, keeping the doing the works, the repairs, and that sort of thing. You know, the public really wants to be able to hear from us that, hey, we're, we're, we were serious when we came to you to ask for money, and this is how we're, this is how we're gonna spend it, and specifically, this is how it's gonna help. Because they're real, and these are the basic real things on here in this first year, so very much envision forward to that. Just a couple of questions regarding the, the staffing. I really appreciate it, the love, you know, the, the consultants, it's permanent staff. So the summary that I'm getting from this, and I want to make sure that I understand the, saying in this year, we're not fully proposing on bringing any of our current consulting positions in-house, and I wanted to understand, first of all, am I right? And then, second, is it because the new hires that we're bringing, that we are gonna be bringing in, are gonna be the people who will help us figure out how to bring those in-house, or are there other factors? Because the, the number of consultants has changed.
Yeah, so I understand your question correctly. You're asking at a high level, as we bring staff in, will the will the consultants demand, do you, theoretically, the answer is yes, because as we bring people in-house, they will be managing projects instead of the consultants themselves. And so I think what you're seeing in the, in the, I believe, the slide, yes, but the second side will be, will be more charging, the request for songs. Those haven't reduced because that was just the past interval in time. As those, as the senior engineer and associate engineer come onboard, there will be a reduction in specific consultants as, as they manage, because they, the associate engineers and the senior engineers can also manage projects while supervising and managing staff.
Great, thank you. So then my follow-up question has to do with finding those, those kinds of candidates, because I know that in the past, we've had trouble, and obviously, that's not gonna, that's not a, that's gonna get fixed overnight, but I'm just wondering if we've already seen improvements in that area, and if so, can you give some detail?
Yeah, we know that hiring engineers in this area is sometimes a challenge, and we've, we've kind of discussed that. and we've, we've kind of discussed that, I've advised, obviously, at times. But what we're starting to see is there are some more qualified candidates as we quickly bring those out most recently. You're, I just mentioned this senior engineer that we're bringing on board. We found a couple of engineers that maybe we'll bring on board. And at this moment in time, we're seeing a higher level of trust in the engineering, in building engineering, which is what we've had in the past. So we felt that now is the time to strike all the iron stock.
Great, that's great of you.
I feel like you've done a lot of work and. Is there anything else, senior manager, or on this topic? Or I apologize for coming and going and managing three different things at once. So I think whatever Vice Mayor Medina asked for, and I think the council was seeking this as well, is sort of an update on project status for the existing CIP. If your Matt Lee suggests we put that in the digest, that's okay with the council. We can certainly do that and provide that as background, further background as we move forward with the budget process. I just wanna make sure what we've done tonight doesn't stall us from making progress on the budget as we move forward. This is a very important night for the CIP. And if the projects themselves appear adequate, that's great. And if council members see additional projects, tonight really is the night to bring those up so we can do the homework on what those might be. I know we've used the portal, we use the process to pull back, and I'm over where we asked council members to submit, we asked public to submit, excuse me. And, you know, the budget's never done until the budget's done. We just wanna make sure we don't get to another hour. We say, well, what about this? And we're sort of caught unable to respond to probably the desol. I'm not trying to put the council on the spot. If you guys are generally okay with what we presented, that's wonderful news. That's great news. Staff did great work. I wanna echo the mayor's comments. I just wanna make sure you're clear that this is your first bite at an apple, which will be more. But as we get closer to that June date, it's gonna be harder for us to dive deep into any kind of major change to the CIP. Or if we're gonna add something, bear in mind, you may have to pull something away. So I just, I just wanna share that with you. Today is April twenty-second. Get back two solid months of opportunities to think things through. I'm not trying to press the council or anything you're not ready to talk about tonight, but that was meant to prompt any new ideas that we didn't, we didn't already capture. Is that a good summary? Okay.
So we've gone, we've gone through and we saw the, for existing projects, new projects, et cetera. Sixteen, seventeen, so to the city manager's questions, there are any additional offers.
Yes, so just going back to, to my initial comment, what really is gonna help is more detailed about the new projects. Because these are the projects we haven't seen before. You know, and to be able to say, to be able to look at this, you know, directionally looking at this, that seems, this seems reasonable, but I don't. For these projects, I have, I have one sentence fragment about what the project is, and I haven't seen anything else. And I'll, I'll be honest, I was kind of expecting a little more detail about, you know, like, here. Okay, baby construction drain installation, sounds important. I don't know anything about it at all. If we had problems at this particular location or in this, you know, and being, being able to give us the tools that we need to go out to the public and say, this is how we're, we're spending money and vice versa, we do these things, that.
And, and thank you, Vice Mayor, having me. We will have, we do have, and we are very interested, public, is a very detailed description of all these projects and whatnot. So that is something that people will also put in the digest and make available to the public as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or any calls?
Council members out there. I'll, I'll say for my part, a lot of these projects do look familiar, and we have a huge backlog to pick from, and so I'm just, I'm glad that we're addressing some of these that have been sitting out there for a while. I, I think one of the roles that we encounter year after year is the fact that we don't have enough staff to see them off. So seeing that there is a staffing plan that accompanies this is reassuring. And I know with more staff also poses, I mean, it poses more work on, on management. So I'm glad to see you willing to take that on. And now, I think that's what we're looking to get these things rolling, especially for everything in senior.
And then also, you know, I think the director's prepared. There's a particular item in the seat. Can you just give me a, a little bit of flavors to what, what that entails? Because I'm sure he's beginning to do me half the time. Other comments?
And that's all great. So this is a little different, right? And things are different over the years and getting additional details is my preference. So I, so I feel fully confident, there's no doubt that paving streets and fixing and doing storm drains and so forth, those are great things, just having a better understanding of it so that I feel super confident in going forward. For example, playground replacement, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, fantastic. Well, we had a presentation, and it's like, the next part of that presentation was gonna be what these other parts that need to get fixed. And so getting that amount of data to know, like, is that two hundred and seventy-five thousand gonna be enough? No. How much is it gonna fix? Which ones are they gonna fix? So not having a full understanding, and does that mean for one year? I mean, it's been two hundred and seventy-five. I mean, I don't have enough information. The dog park conceptual design, something we've been talking about for a while. So that's just conceptual design, that's. Probably getting a consultant, go ahead and do a design on the existing facility, that's where the cost, okay. For asking more, in the sidewalk repair program, I've been asking for that for a number of years. Three hundred fifty thousand dollars is not as much that would fix sidewalks three years ago. So my first reaction to that is that probably it will win because we haven't done it in a while, and all of those sidewalk repairs, they continue getting worse. The street trees that continue to up their sidewalks in there. I don't remember the last time we had a large sidewalk program. Is that two years ago?
I believe it was about a year or two.
Yeah, so, so knowing that, and then, well, where's the list, right? Sidewalk repair list, and how many, what percentage is this gonna fix, right? And the plan ahead, that how much more would we need then? So that's basically, I think you understand what I'm saying. And it's great that it's in, in the digest, but it's also even better to be able to show our residents what this is worth. Not only are you seeing it around in your neighborhood or on the main roof there, but this is the additional work that's having that remains uns, and that, who knows? Nobody can get out there to see everything that's getting done. And I think we should be as transparent and actually being very communicative with the public to let them know what we're doing, because we're doing a lot, and then most of it is what we need. Know how much that really is, so. My last question then is, this is for this year's budget, and for the tranche of bottom money, what is the amount that we're looking at? Because that was the question that I asked previously, and it was, it seemed like this is seventeen and a half million for this year. What is it to apply for the, the remaining years that the funds are gonna be active? And, and so what number are we talking about? Just so I have a better understanding of where we're at with that. But yes, this is a lot of work, I guess, I guess, you know, so I don't need that answer today. But at some point, I think that I'm very hopeful to, to think going forward, what the amount of funds we're, we're gonna need to have in that tranche and how the public can feel absolutely confident that we're taking this on.
Anything else?
Just one, I, I know, I know, as you said, we're gonna be getting details of all the new projects and all that. And you can just give us the elevator pitch, short version of the green stormwater infrastructure information, implementation project? It has a tantalizing name, so I just. I'm not looking for a staff department, just the, just the basic words.
Sure. Good evening. Our way of council meeting for council members, we want our chief engineer to produce a little more structure. The green infrastructure project is related to the new MRP that we just already looked for. No, sorry, do you know that requires that now capital projects that we look at those, and some of those may actually require green infrastructure to be constructed alongside those types of capital projects. And so we have street reconstruction that, that could result in additional green infrastructure requirements. It's just as that permit has become more and more stringent, they've added additional layers. And so it's to address those types of requirements that are required as a result of, of the capital project. Definitely, as well as meeting the requirements of the MRP.
All right, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Director, are we okay? Just wanna make sure you and the team are off your way with whatever you think you need from us. To hear from us, I just wanna make sure as we have this time that you met your, your expectations in which you're one of us.
Yes, good feedback, so thank you for all that. You know, our goal is to be transparent and to kind of deliver projects that the community wants and deserves. So the, I think there's a lot of good feedback here, and we'll, we'll keep moving and provide that information. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do know the city managers said, just the director said, not just the digest, but also out to the community as well. So I think that, you know, this is open forum, so this is transparent. If they're doing anything, they have to close doors or not wanting to communicate. There is a lot of work that has been done, and it is, and at times we do need to step back. Everybody's day to day, so sometimes you forget the last six months, but really, this community, this council, thanks to the staff, has really put forward and implemented it. Thank you. With that, we move on to the next item, which is item four, conduct to business.
Consider the formation of an ad hoc subcommittee to investigate potential partnerships and opportunities to work with the San Bruno Park School District to better serve the San Bruno community.
So our last meeting, this was under council comments, under Vice Mayor, brought forward for to do an ad hoc committee, ad hoc committee. Yeah, I, I just noticed that too. So it's an ad hoc committee, it's a, as we know, an ad hoc forms, it meets, and then it dissolves. Doesn't continue because then it becomes a standing, so, yes. And so I'm open, but I know in the past for the city, we've done mayor, vice mayor. Doesn't mean anything, things can change. I also believe that, be, for some time, you saw how we met quarterly, which was too much. And then it was sometimes a forty-five minute presentation given by a superintendent. That was too much, and it was more of an overview of what it was. There's been times that there's been gatherings or groups, and it was kind of more of a agenda, not a board or councils topic. I was texting Ray Doocy, the president of the board, to say, so how are we, how are you agendizing our, are you? So there, his thought was to have the superintendent and the city manager maybe collaborate, come up with items that would be. I know I started rambling some thoughts, but if the field maintenance agreement is valid, not up to two years, points to talk about it now, unless there's something pressing. So, and I think Ray, or the president, agreed with that topic or maybe items are given to the city manager, so from council, just so. But I think there needs to be a set agenda, and not just walk in the room and say, so what is our big thing? Staffing preparation. And we all know schools coming down, we'll close, the budget is due, so. We're, we're mindful and respectful of both the superintendent and city manager. Thank you. Back to Vice Mayor.
Sure, and I think one way around that is we can use online software, like Google Docs. It's accessible to, to council members, to board members, superintendent, and it can be like the brainstorming part, or it's thrown there, and then there could be some comments, and then when we get to a certain point after a amount of time, okay, let's have a meeting and talk about it. And somebody could take, it could be a city manager or anyone, or it could be any committee member that goes and takes a stab at putting an agenda together. And so it, it will, it will maximize the, I think, the efficiency of it instead of, that's all. And I've been, we've been at those meetings where they could just go to left field, into weeds, and then down the gutter. But I think, I think here with, with new board members and it, it can be different. And so I think we can work on an agenda that it doesn't get too out of bounds and relying on the expertise of our city manager and our superintendent to kind of guide us. We could, we could work up with this, creating this agenda that we can all, we can agree with, and then have the meetings, talk about it, and I don't imagine it going more than, you know, a couple meetings. And not quarterly, maybe it'll be two or three meetings, not a year long. I don't know what the status that the main, the field use agreement may be expired. I know it's happened before, where we didn't even realize it, and we're like, oh, yeah, it expired. Field agreement, oh, okay, so it just happens. And there's been some more deliberation, I think, between our parks department and, and the schools to, to figure out how to get soccer fields in viable condition, trauma or extreme. I can't involve, it'd be never better in twenty years. So that's kind of where I'm at. I would, of course, love to serve on, I, I think. I think, I think the mayor, vice mayor could be, you know, sit there at their turn, their turn, working together on it. So I think it'd be good.
And I know with the president of the board, he thought two to three topics maybe max for each side because of this, at time of error, and, and I always like the set agenda. I like the manager and superintendent, they usually talk monthly, you're there about, and I'll just go back in history. So one meeting, we go into the room, and there's a piece of paper that's handed across the table, and it's a termination notice from the school district from the board. It was maintenance use agreement, and then exercised their days, and it was gonna be terminated. And it was like, I didn't see that coming, and we weren't prepared for it. So that's why I believe it's always good to be kind of on the same page, knowing what the staff's getting into what we're doing. But we're also mindful of schools coming to a close, and budgets are due for everybody, so. So finding that, maybe, sorry, the city manager, and the superintendent can, and I know you conversed, but, and you guys, you coached too, so maybe that's an idea.
Yeah, so superintendent, you and I, we have regularly scheduled meetings, and yeah, these are the kinds of things that we could brainstorm together, and, and your ideas from the ad hoc committee members as well, but may or may not be something worthy of conversation. There may be things that limit us as a city from being able to do something. And those, what that could be similarly could be on the school district side as well. So I think our, our ability to kind of filter through things that there may not be worthy of, you know, taking the time of the ad hoc committee, and then obviously we can agendize it if this were the, that the committee's time, so.
And then so with, with the concurrents, I don't know, we need to go with the concurrents that the mayor, the vice mayor serve on this ad hoc committee, which will maybe be two times or so, that the superintendent and the city manager will collaborate together and work with their counterparts on their boards to put together an agenda. Fair enough, everybody? Zach, work, everybody, I see you, City Attorney, it's a, to me, what we need.
Mr. Mayor, if you, if you feel like you have the agreement from your council, that's sufficient.
Is there anybody that does not agree? Harry and Steve, none, so I'm gonna send the, that's a yes. With that, thank you. Thank you. No, you're welcome, and there are. The vice mayor just recommended a lot of new members, center, board members, we're just filling any of them that have been involved. So it will be a new experience on that. So anything else on that, it's a convention, okay? So moving on to item five, we had had potentially scheduled a closed session, but believe it or not, it's changed again.
Okay, never mind.
So if I can take you to council's time?
Yes.
In closed session, maybe that's the need to make.
And the reason city manager, because it's changed back, or I got a ton of life and sitting here. So item five, closed session, conference labor negotiations, agency designate representative is our city manager. Employee organization is San Bruno Management Association, city council will call it closed session. Come back out, see if there's any reportable action, who will turn this special meeting to the regular meeting, uh, city council will call it closed session.
Okay, the city councils come from closed session. There is no reportable action at this time. Therefore, we will adjourn the special meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held in just a couple moments. So with that, the special meeting is adjourned. which will be held in just a couple moments. So with that, the special meeting is adjourned. Welcome everyone to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of April 22nd, 2025. Please, it's been called the order roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. May I ask Peter Carey if you would be so inclined to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening? Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. I am number four of a common tribe not on the agenda for the CV. How many speaker cards?
I have one speaker card.
Please call the speaker.
Tommy Ledesma.
Good evening, all the mayor, councilmembers, city leaders and members of the community. My name is Tommy Ledesma and I proudly serve as President of the San Bruno Police Association. I've been an officer for almost 13 years and a resident of this community for 28. I'm here tonight because our department has had a tipping point. Morale is teetering. Our officers show up every day committed to protect this city, but men feel uncertain about their future, about leadership, and about whether their sacrifices instill values. We've lost good officers, and risking losing more, not just to retire, but to do the two departments that offer competitive pay and stronger support. Many people commute long distances such as Roseville, Tracy, Brentwood, Calhers County, and even Canada, driving through cities and agencies that are now offering competitive salaries, attractive bonuses, and other valuable incentives. This will be the last year of our current contract. Due to the uncertainty and challenges brought on by the pandemic, we had agreed to a four-year contract, which to my knowledge had never been done. With the understanding that this was a necessary compromise during an unprecedented time, this decision was made in good faith with the belief that while immediate compensation adjustments might not be feasible, future negotiations will reflect the sacrifices made. It was widely expected that once the situation stabilized, the next contract would fairly compensate for commitments and the efforts made to support continuity and stability during a global crisis. I want to remind this council of Measure G, which passed with overwhelming community support. We publicly endorse this measure, not only in word, but in action going door to door. The promise was clear: invest in public safety in San Bruno. Yet here we are, still waiting to see any of those dollars put to work where they were promised. We urge you to promise that commitment and to ensure those funds go directly to keeping our public safety department strong and stable, knowing for a fact that the city currently holds reserve funds that exceed the average level typically maintained by municipalities and similar-sized structures, and while knowing that maintaining healthy reserves is physically responsible. It is equally important to ensure that these access funds are directed towards measures that were promised. Filling these commitments will not only enhance public trust, but also ensure the city's financial strength directly benefits those people we serve. There is also uncertainty surrounding the hiring of a new chief. Our members are watching closely, hoping for a leader who understands the unique challenges of this community and department. One reason for recruitment and retention numbers were previously strong was the outstanding leadership of our former chief. His vision, dedication, consistent support created a positive and motivating environment. By leading through example, maintaining open communication and promoting teamwork, he played a key role in making our department a place where people genuinely wanted to work. Now, in the absence of that leadership and without a clear direction moving forward, our only immediate and effective tool for retaining talent is through competitive pay. All we're asking for is a competitive pay increase, not just to attract qualified candidates, but to retain the dedicated officers who stood by the city through some difficult moments. We are not asking for special treatment. We are just asking for fair treatment for the safety of our citizens and the future of our department. Thank you for your back.
Thanks very much, Peter Carey. And thank you for your service and to all those here in the room. Thank you for what you do in this community. And usually we count to applause, but I didn't read anything to say you couldn't, so we'll let that one go. But thank you for your comments. There being no other public speakers, we will move on to item five, announcements and presentations. We are here today, even though last week was to honor public safety personnel and the job that they do, known as the unsung heroes of public safety. So even though it was last week, we still felt important to recognize and acknowledge and honor the hard work that they do. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the official.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for this indulgence. We have a couple of our communications and records supervisors and personnel here, as well as a bunch of our members in support of the unsung heroes, as you so greatly call them. I have Shannon Rohat, who just came forward. Can I ask them to come forward and stand by the podium? I promise I won't make them speak. I promise. Caitlin Williams, Police Dispatcher Two, with us since 2018, and Hayat Chiguri, since 2024, a Police Dispatcher One, plus six years at San Mateo County. We've been lucky to get some ladders, and I think it's really been a long couple of years as we have struggled with staffing. As you know, it's one of the most critical positions and often under a lot of stress. And these unsung heroes and heroes of ours have come in overtime, extra time, and maintained a cool, calm composure so necessary and vital for us to be that link to those in our community, but also to those officers responding. Oftentimes, they are the lifesavers, the true lifesavers for us. I know you came down personally, Mr. Mayor, and presented them with the proclamation, but allowing us to just recognize them here amongst the rest of the city staff, amongst the public, and those who work with them and count on them every day is so meaningful for us. So congratulations. Thank you all for doing this really tough job with grace, with dignity, and with that calmness that reassures all of us, both those responding and those we're responding to, that we're going to get there and we're going to stay alive. So thank you so much and thank you, council and mayor, for letting us have a walk with them.
And as was said, I did go down and I stood in the dispatch room to listen to a few of the calls. You know, on that afternoon, I had a meeting in Redwood City, so I went to the dispatch facility there at the county to thank each of those dispatchers personally, to listen to what they do. They may not do our police, but they do our fire, they do our ambulance. In our community, as we know, we don't know what that next call may bring or what may happen. An active shooter situation, a mall shooting, an explosion, and the inundation and the calmness that is required. I went home and said to somebody, I said, you know, there is no way I could do that job. I don't know that I would have the calm, the ability to multitask, and to ensure that from the moment they call until help arrives, that they feel they have a person that is by their side in their greatest time of need to ensure and give them comfort. That is something that starts with you folks. And you make that difference, and you make it happen, and you do it each and every day. And with that, with my sincere gratitude for what you do for this community or its residents and for all those of us who are working. So I think I can safely say this time, on behalf of the city council, we want to thank you for what you do each and every day. Thank you. Thank you to our public safety personnel, but with decent fire protection here as well. Have a good evening. Be safe. With that, we will now move back to item, or to item A, some announcements. The Spring Community Cleanup Event for Recology is happening this Saturday, April 26th, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., same location, which is 975 St. Lane. San Bruno residents are invited to bring unwanted bulk items to this self-serve drop-off event. Each household will and may dispose of three cubic yards of material, and please bring your proof of residency to the event. It is for San Bruno residents. Item B, Spring Compost Giveaway, with Recology is happening on Saturday, also the 26th and Sunday, 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 at Lion's Field. Residents are welcome to take home a free bucket of compost to help enrich their gardens. This is a self-serve event. Please bring your own bucket, one, five-ton bucket per resident. Item C, California State Assembly Member Diane Happen will hold a town hall at the San Bruno Recreation Center right here in this room this Saturday as well, from 10:00 to noon. A busy time. They will have folks from Cal Fire, Regional Fire Marshals, the California Department of Insurance, and also from the United Policy Holders will be giving presentations and answering questions as we have this new, as you know, the new hazard, the severity zones have been placed in by the state, which is one of those gifts they keep giving without any resources to do the job. But this is the first step in which to outreach. Want to thank the Fire Chief and Dave Bruto from Happen's office, who we got connected with each other and collaborated in order to have this. And my understanding is on RSVPs, there's at least 100-plus, 150. So it's an important topic that will affect our community. I would say mostly Districts 1 and 2 primarily, but it can affect others as well. So that is also this Saturday. We have two proclamations. The first one is recognizing May 2025 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas AA and NHPI is a broad term used to describe a diverse and fast-growing population of over 23 million Americans that includes roughly 50 ethnic groups with roots in more than 40 countries, including the Far East, Southeast, East Asia, Indian, and Indian subcontinent, Native Hawaiian, Samoan, Phoegean, Tongan, and all these folks compose much within the United States of America. And whereas this year's theme is "A Legacy of Leadership and Resilience", honors the enduring strength and visionary guidance of those who have paved the way for progress, inspiring future generations to lead with courage and determination. And whereas time and again throughout our nation's history, AA and NHPI is and have demonstrated their dedication to ideals upon the United States is foundation. In times of war, in times of peace, they have faithfully defended the principles of freedom in uniform. And now therefore I, Rico Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, recognize the challenges faced by the AA and NHPI communities and their vital contributions to the American story, and hereby here designate this month of May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Next one will be declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month. This measure was recognized, is recognizing May, again, May for next month, for 2025 as Mental Health Month in San Bruno to reduce stigma, encourage support, and promote wellness to address mental health and substance use conditions. Whereas every day, millions of people face a stigma related to mental health and substance use conditions and may feel isolated and alone, going years before receiving any help, if left untreated, have life expectancies of 25 years shorter than the general population. And whereas San Bruno residents have access to many behavioral health services at no cost, San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services and its contracted network of providers offer the full spectrum of direct treatment and specialized supports, early intervention, crisis support, and prevention. Starvisa Crisis Services offers crisis intervention 24 hours, seven days a week. Whereas the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Recovery Services, Starvisa, San Mateo County Health Planning Committee and partners are collectively organizing activities where the San Mateo County members can participate in throughout the month, including free in-person and virtual events, advocacy days, and social media campaigns. The 2025 theme is mental health as a con, ongoing updates posted at www.smchealth.org. Now therefore be resolved that I, Rico Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, to hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Month in the City of San Bruno, enhance public awareness of mental health to help end stigma and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance conditions. And also City Hall green is its light, and City Hall will be lit up in green effective on the 1st of May for the month to remind us as we drive by, ultimately, of the importance of reaching out and knowing that someone's here and be for me. Somebody is here. Please.
Hello. Good evening, City Mayor, councilmembers. Good evening, City Mayor, councilmembers, City Manager, Staff, and Residents of San Bruno. I am Kayla Poots. I am the Director of Services Crisis Center. Services for Crisis Center operates a 24/7 crisis intervention and suicide prevention hotline, handling calls, texts, and chats from both local and national sources, including 988, and providing immediate support, conducting suicide risk assessments, developing plans to keep people safe, offering compassionate connections, and we're really proud to dispatch the mobile crisis response for San Mateo County. Additionally, the Crisis Center facilitates mental health and suicide prevention presentations, as well as post-prison interventions for local school districts, strong pop-ups, government agencies, and community-based organizations. These services aim to raise mental health awareness and foster resilience and support throughout San Mateo County. Thank you, San Bruno, for proclaiming 2025 May Mental Health Month. This is observed in our county as well as California and the United States. Mental health is essential to a person's life in the same way that physical health is. Hesitation to talk about mental health adds to the notion that the topic is taboo. It is important to normalize conversations surrounding mental health so people can feel empowered to seek the help that they need. A lime green or green in general is the national color for mental health and represents how we want to bring a bright light to an important issue that may be hidden or seen negatively. And it's one of the best times of the year to reduce stigma, connect people to services, and promote wellness and mental health and substance use conditions support. As we heard, mental health as a continuum is the theme of this year's Mental Health Month, and it challenges the binary idea of healthy versus unhealthy, normalizing the wide range of mental health experiences, and encouraging people to embrace and accept the full spectrum of wellbeing. Mental Health Month is important to me because as a clinical social worker, a San Bruno resident, a parent, and someone who continues to navigate mental health challenges daily, I know the prioritization of mental health and the reduction of stigma saves lives and promotes a stronger and more resilient community for our future generations. Starting today, I invite you to take action with one or more of the options where lime green or a green ribbon Starting today, I invite you to take action with one of or more of the options where line green or a green ribbon to physically show or virtually showing your social media profile um that you're interested in open to sparking a conversation and sharing it on mental health. You can learn about mental health resources available by visiting nine-eight-eight lifeline.org or our website, sanmateo crisis.org, and consider attending or hosting a mental health awareness event in your community. Thank you so much to San Bruno community for recognizing May Mental Health Month.
You're very welcome. Thank you for being here as always. Uh Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind you that our city is one of four that does participate in the countywide crisis response team. We use Star Vista clinicians to respond directly to our community. Just this last week, we had a critical incident wherein a troubled son was both threatening but also appealing to his mother for help. And we brought in Jenna, our team member, and she was able to work with us to resolve and especially provide support to the family. And it's been an amazing, amazing journey. So wanted to recognize Star Vista and your support in the countywide uh response team for that.
Thank you for letting us know that. Thank you for getting, being here. You were here last year too, so different building. Hopefully you didn't go to the wrong one. Um but thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm gonna plead being an interim and an outsider and not always aware of what order we do things in, but we had our Prime Prevention Committee come tonight.
I was just going to acknowledge them next, but let's do it together.
Okay, great. I just wanted to say that since I have been here several few months, they're everywhere. And they're so supportive and so responsive, and they're looking forward to doing even more as we get the cleanup initiative going. And uh might I introduce them?
You may, please.
If you don't mind. Uh they're an amazing group. They meet monthly with us and there's great plans for the future. I'm very excited about them. We do have our chair here. Um we have uh both Peter Carey, we have our chair, who I would say has been just indefatigable, Richard Wong, our Vice Chair Deanna is here with us as well. Maria Concha, I saw her with her floppy head at the A-Hunt, A-Gropan this uh weekend downtown. Um and we also have uh with us June Chen. And so these are five of our six. Or six, five, six of our seven. Did I get everybody? Okay, great. And I just had to recognize them as I am so impressed with both their steadfast commitment and dedication and the plans they have for the future for really stepping up with cleanup as well as our National Night Out coming up August second. So thank you for indulging us and thank this committee for always coming out to support what we're doing.
Well, no, I wanted to thank uh everyone and Rich helped you because I didn't, I was gonna call you, but Mike. So uh so, you know, and and again, it is about the volunteers. It is about those that go out. The National Night Out has started at Runde Art and expanded into various other areas of the community. And so uh it's very uh appreciative and thankful for all that you do. And I know two of us, I knew you were there, uh started on Crime Prevention Committee, so it it does something right. So uh Mr. Salazar and I uh were both on that at separate times, but um it began there as well. So again, thank you, Chief, for uh making sure that they get acknowledged. I'm going to say that we have no speaker cards on anything under our announcements and presentations.
No speaker cards.
And you? All right. With that, we will move on to item six, Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. Anything for separate vote, colleagues? Seeing none, is there any items uh A through G that we want to uh add a comment or ask a question? By seeing none, bring to enter being a public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. Good group. Second, Motion Salazar, Second and Hamilton to approve all consent. All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And recorded as a five oh union dispo. With that, we'll move on to item seven, Public Hearing.
Hold. Public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution amending the master fee schedule effective July first, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so with that, we're going to now turn over this item to Mr. Adam. Don't be shy. Oh, no. He's multi-passed. He does well.
Good evening, again, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is Brian Adams, City Manager, here to provide you a presentation on the proposed changes to the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six master fee schedule. I wanted to provide you a quick background, so the review, or review of the changes proposed and upcoming, and then our recommendation for tonight. So the objective, just wanted to provide you an overview of those proposed changes for the master fee schedule for the next fiscal year. For the background, basically in twenty nineteen, the city received a study or a fee study from Willdan. They proposed indexing or re-indexing most of all fees and increasing all fees. Last year, that is when the City of San Bruno completed all those recommended increases. And um yeah. That being said, I wanted to provide a overview of some of the proposed changes. These are included in the staff report. But for index fees, most of the fees that are indexed are either indexed to the Consumer Price Index or to the Engineer News Report Construction Cost Index. So for all fees that are tied to the Consumer Price Index, most staff time fees, these are all increased by the Consumer Price Index for clerical wage workers for the San Francisco Bay Area for the period February twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, a roughly two point seven percent increase. So that was applied across the board to all staff time fees. For all fees that are tied to Engineer News Report Construction Cost Index, ENR CCI, uh the ENR CCI for San Francisco in the past for the period February twenty-twenty-four, February twenty-twenty-five was actually negative. So part of the recommended action for council to consider tonight is we are asking council to defer any changes to those fees as part of ordinances eighteen fifty-eight, eighteen fifty-nine, and within the city code regarding different planning fees that are tied to the ENR CCI. It's within the council's power to basically defer those increases. And then for other changes to fees, within the planning chapters, the planning department has added a couple of smaller fees. So within those areas where they've added those fees, they basically reflect the reduced amount of staff time that's evolved, involved in like dealing with those requests from the members of the public. So rather than charge people like a very, very high amount, we just charge them a smaller amount that kind of more accurately reflects, uh like more accurately reflects the amount of staff time that goes into it. And then some other updates for the library that we're proposing are to remove the minor lost item fee, which was two dollars. So it takes a lot more time to collect those two dollars to members of the public versus just replacing that item. So we're recommending we remove that. Another fee that the library or that we're proposing to add or remove from the library chapter is basically the library card replacement fee for people ages seventeen and younger. So just to reduce that barrier for people that are really young in the community, we want to keep them coming back to the library to get what they need. Keep using the computers, keep checking out books, and keep reading and learning. We don't want them too afraid to mention that they lost the library card to their parents. And that being said, so what do we do about those other fees? So some things that have not been updated or are currently not proposing changes are fees affecting the Recreation and Aquatic Center. The Recreation and uh Community Services Staff recently received a market study. And this market study has provided us information to basically get a sense of what are similar uh facilities like the RAC, how, what fees are they charging, how how do we bring them into better alignment with those other facilities? What are the fees that we might consider increasing and what are the fees that we might consider lowering so that there's a lesser impact to numbers of the community to kind of benefit from the community benefit that the RAC gives? And then for capacity charges, as noted in the staff report, for water and wastewater capacity charges, there are no proposed changes inside the master fee schedule or in the appendix items. But the Public Works Department has received a draft study that they're currently reviewing. And when that draft study is finalized, they'll be proposing some potential fee changes for the capacity for water and wastewater. And with that being said, I wanted to bring us back to the recommendation, which is for council to accept the proposed changes as on file with the city clerk and to defer uh any changes to fees that are indexed to the ENR CCI. And with that, staff are available to take any questions, provide any clarification on some of the proposed changes that are inside the proposed master fee schedule updates for fiscal years twenty-five to twenty-six.
Thank you very much for uh that report. Appreciate it. Uh this is a public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards?
We have no speaker cards.
So let's see if there's any questions from colleagues. None. Okay, um.
No, no questions. No questions on the other page others over there.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh go ahead. The Vice Mayor says go ahead, Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. Um I noticed uh for the RAC uh fee changes that will take a fact and rate. Um beginning, I've had time to the members for the release of the possibly these subjects.
So thank you for that question, Councilor Alvarez. When, uh right now, the staff has not uh brought it to agenda which council meeting or which of council's regular meetings in May will come to, but when we've walked on that date, we will give the appropriate public notice to members of the public so that they have, like you say, ample time to review the changes before the public hear.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, uh Mayor. I have a couple of questions about how the other community centers like the Ballard Community Center, Surtolo Community Center, Senior Center, how often are they rented out? Um just to see, how do we know how, oh, yeah, that's basically like, if we were to lower them, would more people want to use them? And then for, in addition, the outdoor areas like Centennial Plaza, just wanted to hear a little bit, a little bit more about how that number came up to, for two hundred and fifty dollars, what do you get? Um so those are kind of the questions I have for now.
Seeing as uh our Community Services Director is on right here at this very moment, I won't speak for him. But what I will say is that part of the getting a market study was kind of getting a sense of what other facilities are charging. And I think the other thing is part of the work that we're doing to adjust those fees is to make sure that they accurately capture the staff time. And I think, at least speaking for the Recreation and Aquatic Center, because it is a new facility, kind of like gauging like what is that balance of like cost recovery? And cost recovery for staff time versus cost recovery for use of the facilities versus like cost recovery for securing funds to ensure the proper maintenance of facilities and also just what level of supportable staff provide to people that rent these spaces? I think that because this, the facility is like recently opened, it kind of is like an open conversation between council and staff to kind of see like what is the level of service that we would like this facility to provide? And, you know, we, we do want like more cost recovery and council kind of gives us that direction. Then we will increase, we'll bring those changes to proposal. If you want to make sure it's more of a community benefit, then those fees can be scaled back. But that's kind of above my pay grade.
And I'm, and understood. I guess my, probably the larger question that I'm asking is, so how often does these various community centers get rented? Um I am aware of a baseball team that's looking to uh, I signed up, you, you mind, but looking to get a space to, to have an event. And it's like, well, it's really, really expensive here. That's, I told, it's like, okay. This, this analysis will be good, but what other potential revenue uh opportunities are we perhaps missing at our other centers? Not just this facility, just to understand what's brand new. Uh how can we make them, could we make them more affordable and how will people know about that these locations are available for, for rent? Um so I understand we're probably not ready to answer most questions now, but at some point it would be interesting to see, you know, what those numbers really are. Um the last thing I wanted to uh point out or question is with these tariffs that I'm hearing from friends like that have manufacturing facilities, like things are really crazy expensive. So if we're gonna put in a connection for water or sewer, have those costs, that can really going up. So I'm a little concerned of hesitating on increasing the costs and maybe there's a way to allow the application of tariffs to be passed on to the advocate because why should the city insert those costs if we're not, if we're freezing them from last year's rate? So just want to make sure that, that we cover the tariff part because those costs could be substantial.
And, see, if I may, uh Mr. Mayor, correct, and, and Mr. Vice Mayor, we don't know what the impact will be. The ENR will come out and will likely, if the terrorist have the results that a lot of people fear they're gonna have, the ENR number will go up dramatically next year, then our rates would, our fees would fall. So in the moment, really the request about the ENR has to do with the fact that the ENR dropped from last year. We're just asking to hold those rates in part because of things like the tariffs and whatnot. We don't want to find ourselves chasing um uh, thank you, uh Mr. Hamilton saying, uh going downhill. We immediately hold our, our position.
I totally agree with that position. My concern is the active costs for getting the materials into construction, those costs are now. And so if the city is supplying for those connection costs, then we're gonna be out additional money. So there should be some mechanism to where the capacity charge is set charge. If you're going from a certain size of pipe to another pipe, that's a set cost based on that differential in size. But the actual costs for installation and connection, I'm hoping that we have a way to make sure that we can recover that. I, I had some language in there saying that the, including the cost of materials due to terrorists that the city, the city would be charging those costs, not freezing them to the current levels.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Matt Leef, Public Works Director. If I understand the question correctly, um is how do we address the increasing tariff costs? So in, in our, in our construction specifications, we have that the contractor is facing with the crisis, have the whole their costs, unless they, unless the material costs themselves at the time they exceed a specific percentage of costs. And um and if it exceeds that, then allows them the rules to be negotiated, particularly if the costs exceed my percentage of the total limited price. So there's already something factored in there for that. Um I think uh if I, you're saying correctly, what you're asking for is how can we control costs even if the tariffs are coming in? And if, if we're gonna put language in there, what that would do is the, everyone that's bidding would just kind of hedge their bets, right? That the cost will go up, so the cost would be higher. So it's always gonna be a balance between trying to mitigate our risk or the contractor's risk. All we're doing is transferring risk from one to the other. Um ultimately, a little bit pricing, you're gonna set a cost where it's going to cost because they will try to do it as soon as possible.
I agree with you. I agree with that. And what I'm asking is a little different. And I see next to me up here, so for instance, let's say um a developer wants to go ahead and put a day and inch valve, put a new main in, and the cost should be for those, make sure those costs for those materials as they go on. And the part of the passing charge remains the same, but that the cost can be recovered, making sure that we, I'm looking at, maybe he's seen this, I'm looking at you. So it's not bidding that I'm concerned with, because I, I agree with you. It's what you did and that can be negotiated if there was something crazy.
Thank you, but thank you, Vice Mayor, Nick Figaro, City uh Administrative Services Director and CFO. Uh the, the, if I understand your, your, your question correctly, Vice Mayor, um we're, we're talking about the fee that we charge to the customer in an environment where our costs are increasing, whether due to tariffs or labor, whatever the case may be. Um the action the council is being asked to take this evening is to adjust the master fee schedule, which sets the rates for next year, as you know. Um the mechanism that we can adjust those fees is governed by our municipal code and, and city ordinance that specify very specific indexes. And the action that we're recommending this evening is that rather than lower the, the uh, the uh capacity charges uh to keep them steady because uh, to keep them steady, because we anticipate that they will go up in the future, and that we net out the decrease year over year. The, the unfortunate reality is, is that we're always gonna be behind the ball when it comes to the fees that we set for the master fee schedule and the costs that requires for us to provide the service or provide the improvement. And in concept, in over a ten-year timeframe or multi-year timeframe, it'll average out. Uh, that's the general sense, uh, but for the action this evening, uh, of course, we're, we are monitoring tariff, tariff news, which seems to change daily. Um, but as Director Lee pointed out, we really will see improvement in the pudding once we start to get some of our bid documents back. And we'll see what the true impact is, but for right now, uh, we are locked into those indexes, I see the city attorney agreeing with me, uh, and, and so that, that's, uh, you know, I, I, absent changing the index, which I think has some props to eighteen or potentially some legal considerations. Um, we are a little bit.
Yeah. City attorney.
I'll just, I'll just feel like what I had I, Director Lee and Director Figaro said, which is, yes, the indexes are in our municipal code or adopted by ordinance, which change those, we have to do that by ordinance. It's my understanding that right now, the city is working, staff is working on revising the capacity fee studies to revise what the baseline amount of those capacity charges would be. So that would build in, like, that would take a look at the current costs of, you know, whatever, what the capacity these are intended to pay for, update those fees, and then again, they will probably be set to some sort of an index so that they would increase annually. So, arguably, that study would build in new costs and how things now affect the city when it's trying to, uh, you know, invest in CIP for the sewer and the water.
I agree with everything you said. What I was talking about, the actual materials that as the terrorists come in, that are, that we still bill out the cost of materials with, with the, whatever the latest costs are. If you were gonna order another four set of blocks, and you have to pay for it, I'm, I'm saying that, because, um, Ryan Peters over there, he's a locksmith, that cost has to be paid by someone. And so, the materials that we order, those costs get applied to the developer or homeowner, whoever is using our equipment, uh, the capacity charge is, is separate, I'm not trying to say to revise that. I'm saying, I agree with keeping it frozen, I was concerned about the cost of materials.
Sure. The terrorists, sure.
So anyhow, I, I think I'm good, I'm sorry for, for creating more of a ruckus over here, but, um, I'm pretty sure we'd be, should be able to charge whatever the materials cost for the work that we do, and I just want to make sure that, I understand that that's gonna continue.
President. So, uh, I'll take a step back. If there's any ability for us to correct charge, we charge when we purchase materials. Um, capacity charge is a little different, right, like, I figured I said, that's all. Um, but, uh, if, let's say you did some work for, say, a contractor that built pipe, and we went, we purchased new tariff pipes that are now thirty percent more, those new tariff pipe costs are gonna go back and still bill to the contractor which you're dealing with. So for that, that's, that's separate, now, sorry, I'm gonna, great, point, thank you very much.
Other questions or comments from colleagues, uh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so for the application fee for the permit, um, I noticed it's, um, uh, it's not made, but it's zero, and we just charge one year annual, and this fee is, uh, belongs to Public Works. What about for planning application, does planning look at the application or do they go directly to, uh, Public Works? Because you only have one annual fee for the permit.
Yeah, um, my name is not, we'll get the options, so we'll go through the options, if you saw us.
Thank you.
If, if, let's do the document, um, I know there are a lot of things that seem un, unnecessary to repetitive, so like, have four different categories, or something very similar, all at the same price. I'm wondering, why do we do that? It's, it makes it, you know, a fifty-page document. Couldn't we compress it, those things combined, some of them, maybe a little more user printing?
That's what we're saying, sorry, uh, thank you for the question. Uh, we are, as, as the city attorney mentioned, not only are we in the process of reviewing the capacity charges, we're getting, we're going through a capacity charge, as Ray said, we're also going through a comprehensive user fee and, um, cost recovery, uh, analysis, which should be wrapped up this time next year. And so, part of that process will be to identify opportunities to simplify and streamline both the fees as well as the document itself, so we are working on that. Um, but as, as of right now, I will want to make as few changes as, as possible, and so, uh, that's what's good.
Hey, um, any other question, your comments, uh, last call for anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Not hearing any, I'm gonna go ahead, I don't know that we need a motion to vote, so you turn it that I can close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I, this is, um, different by local, by local practice, so whatever your typical practice is for putting votes in the public hearing.
I'm in front of the street at the speed of our, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Wait, motion is second, I was trying to scream my, Mr. Salzroth. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If I vote recorded, public hearing closed. Coming back to the council, this is a resolution asking for adoption and or action. Back to you. I have a motion that we, um, the bottom resolution has been submitted. Motion seconded, uh, to adopt as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And to record, had it recorded, it's by the unanimous vote. If that, we want item eight, conduct to business.
Respond to the request from the County of San Mateo to authorize the city manager to negotiate a reimbursement agreement with the county for unreimbursed bridge funding for the purchase and installation of thirteen fair gates at the San Bruno Bard Station in the amount not to exceed one million, six hundred and thirty-six, three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Thank you very much, and then I will move, uh, to the city manager. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Members of the Council, good evening, um, Alex McHarrigan, your city manager. Um, this is the first staff report since I've entered that I've written, did the PowerPoint for, I'm actually presenting, so this is gonna test my analyst skills all over again, so bear with me, thank you. Um, this council has agreed on.
Through the mayor, if I may interrupt, I'm actually sharing this screen, so I can advance the slides for you.
Um, thank you, thank you, bye, please. Thank you, just by way of background, uh, excuse me, um, as, as far as we're trying to get this evening, we're gonna cover the background and the recommendation on board this, um, item, next screen, next slide, please. So the objective really is to give you a deeper background, so understanding, um, the county's, uh, bridge funding, which they have issued to ensure that the Bard Fair Gates are upgraded, and we're seeking the county, excuse me, the council's response to San Mateo County's request to enter into a revert reimbursement agreement for about one point six million dollars for Bard's new fair gate at the San Bruno station, next slide, please. So this is by way of background, this is very informative for me, I was mentioning to the mayor earlier, where they tortured past Bard has had um, in this region, getting its own form, um, I learned a lot, so, you know, Bard is a, you know, separate regional transit agency, transit, has a district formed in nineteen fifty-seven, it has its own elected board of directors and, and its own funding sources. San Mateo County ultimately opted out of the original district, so we are not a part of the Bard district. Um, Bard extended train service, as you all know, to SFO in two thousand and three, which is when the Bard station, excuse me, the San Bruno Bard station was created, next slide. In two thousand and twenty-five, uh, Bard initiated its next generation fair gate project, which includes system-wide replacements to replace all the fair gates, um, in the Bard stations totaling over ninety million dollars. Um, total cost for new fair gates in San Mateo County is ten point three billion dollars. And on March twenty-eighth, the county board of supervisors voted unanimously to provide Bard with a ten point three billion dollar bridge loan. Just by way of discussion, the, the, the mechanics of how this is all set up to work is that Bard now is going to apply for the county's Measure W Regional Transit Connection Program as a means of potentially paying back the bridge loan. And this is a competitive grant, uh, which the, uh, the Bard has agreed to apply for. Next slide. So timing-wise, this is where things got a little muddy. Um, Bard had to purchase the new fair gates by April first, and with the RTC grant award, the, the timeline for, for Anna Ward is summer of twenty twenty-five, so you can see you have a four-month gap there. San Mateo County agreed to provide the, the bridge funding, um, for the, for, in anticipation of receiving a grant or a dive grant. Um, in any grant received by Bard for the, for the program would be reimbursed fully to the county, that, that, that's what we've heard. However, Daly City, Colma, South City, Millbrae, San Bruno, we each host Bard stations, and therefore, we're being asked to shoulder all or a portion of the cost of the fair gates, should the grant not be realized, again, it's a competitive grant, next slide. Um, county has asked each city to, um, enter into a reimbursement agreement upon the, um, uh, should the, the county learn that Bard indeed did not receive the RTC grant. The county has tentatively and generously offered allowing payback of any funds owed industry-free for up to ten years. So, fiscal impact here, this is sort of a, this is where the rubber hits the road here. So, Bard's purchase and installation of the thirteen fair gates for San Bruno's, as I said, one point, over one point six million. If Bard receives the RTC grant, this whole conversation is for not. However, if, if Bard receives none or only a portion of the grant request, then the city would owe the difference. Next slide. So, let me stop there for a second, so I have had conversations offline with each of you about this topic, and this is a separate public agency asking another public agency to pay for their infrastructure costs. Period. That's it. And you can join in, or we can choose not to. Uh, South City has, uh, South City City Council authorized our city manager to negotiate, you know, the agreement. Daly City, Colma, and Millbrae, I have not put back on them to know what they, what those councils have done, so we're second to five now being asked this question. Um, a, a, I reached out to the county executive Mike Caligie and asked him, well, what if our council says no, what if the council says no, do not negotiate? Caligie's response was, either we would have to pay the amount directly to Bard, meaning we could just pull out our own funds and pay the money if we wanted a fair base to go in, which we could do, or alternatively, theoretically, Bard would install the fair gates. And that's where this whole thing rests right now, is this question of local taxpayer dollars being used to pay for a regional transit district's infrastructure costs to upgrade their systems for security and frankly, uh, collecting fares. And the mayor knows, and I, and I've spoken to each of you separately, I, I struggle with this issue very candidly, if you read the recommendation, that's not saying we recommend, it says, we respond to the request from the county to authorize the city manager to negotiate a reimbursement agreement with the county for unreimbursed bridge funding for the purchase and installation of thirteen fair gates at the San Bruno Bard Station in an amount not to exceed one point six three six. So that's what the question before the council, and I think, um, um, next slide, please, I think I'm, I'm, I'm not, I think I am, I am available for, uh, to answer any questions, and, uh, I know the mayor has some insight to this as well, so, uh, anyway, that's, that's the question before the council tonight, thank you. I'll just add, uh, what I do know is that I have spoken to the city managers of the, not Colma, because Colma actually is an incorporated, uh, it's not in the town, so, um, and there's one city that may wish to just write the check and not enter into an agreement. By understanding this from the county, that whatever agreement would be, would be the same verbiage for each community with the exception of the dollar amount, unless that jurisdiction said it would be. So that would be the consistency. Um, I might make a suggestion too, that I know also, uh, city manager, I have talked with him, um, on this topic, and it's a unique, it's a first principle, but there's also, I think, necessity to the community, to merchants, to public safety. Um, so, my suggestion also is to, uh, have the city manager, or city manager does me, contact the county of San Mateo in regards to the MLU, and then, whatever that is, to come back to the city council as a whole to review and then make the decision at that time. So if we have a document for us, it should be the amount as the city manager said. Um, I will just tell you that we have the former police chief, Brian, Brian Johansson, who, as I quoted after before, in two years' time, he spent six hundred thousand dollars in a sixty percent drop in theft and crime, when we had fare evasion being paid for by our taxpayers, which came largely from Target. Um, I took the train to meeting either the San Carlos Regency, so coming back home, the, I say train, I'm sorry, a pouchman, um, we paused at Millbrae. And again, as you know, when the train pauses, it's not a long time, as I look out the window to just their six lower case, there were two people that just did fare evasion. Easy. I was at San Bruno, uh, uh, another week and just watched it happen again. This may not be a hundred percent full of nothing and like this, but I think for what it proves for our community, and to not have the fair gates, I think, is a challenge. I think to, uh, and I may ask, uh, our engine, please chief, because there's a fresh set of office. You can see it differently than Ryan. Um, there was, we've had, please to correct me, a couple officers that have had, uh, minor, but had had injuries due to this situation. That to me is much more possible. Over ten years, the manager told me it would be about a hundred and sixty thousand. When, when I went to the board of supervisors, there was language that said, uh, Bard intends, and one of the, uh, supervisor members said, no, 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 not they intend, they will. So they are obligated to put in for the grant from the transportation authority of San Mateo County. It's under a transportation agency, so it's very limited to who can apply. There's forty million dollars in that bucket in which needs to be, get, uh, potentially awarded. They're going to ask for a hundred percent, I understand. Uh, and there may be two to three applicants that may come in, one including Bard. Staff with the transportation authority will review it, make recommendations to the whole board, and then they can take action. Now again, there's nothing that says it's a guarantee, these call there. Um, but I just wanted to give some of that back into it. And if I can ask, because I thought it was important too that I went to our engine chief, because now we have fresh ops, and the office that looks right to the fair gates. So, what have, what do you know, what do you feel in, in regard to this situation, if I could ask?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was pretty shocked, frankly, when I came to San Bruno. The chief's office looks directly over the fair gates between Target and the walkway directly to the fair gates, and, um, there were at least three, if not five, shoplifting, um, events a day that's between Target, Marshalls, Cold, all those, all of these different, mostly big box stores. Um, on any day, there are resistors. Uh, they come from the fare evasion, hopping over, and I can really almost call it if I happen to be looking out the window, we're going to probably see a shoplifting out of that. Uh, a lot of them come and they have started resisting more. And the problem with that is, we do get injuries in the last three weeks. We've had both a corporal and an officer injured minor, thank goodness, but there is this, this significant cost, I think, in public safety, to our merchants for sure, to both overtime as we do the fare evasion, and also to the injuries, uh, that we risk, that we face and see. And so I think for us, we haven't done a lot of publication of that, uh, and I do hope that, you know, it stops soon. I will tell you how easy it is to get over those gates, because I ran out myself today to back up an officer and Bard officer who were having problems with a, a Target shoplifter who had run out and punched a Target security employee, and I was surprised at how easily I was able. And I was surprised at how easily I was able to just push one of those gates open myself. And I was running in there to assist another, uh, officer. So I, I would say that it's a very high priority for the police department. I know the fiscal issues are certainly different than that. But I think for merchants, community safety, and police, it's a really important priority.
Thank you, I appreciate you allowing me to mix in background of that, the parts that I do. So, uh, in hand. So, um, I'm very conflicted on that. So I, the, I'm in full agreement that the, these are very integrated. I, you know, nobody needs me to, to say, uh, in a much more, a much, uh, less effective way than she just did, oh, why, um, why integrated? The problem here is that, and, and, you know, and I, I'm sure, um, during our one on one, there were, I, I think I had said, what, like several times, uh, once, as we were going through this, I was talking to this item with the city manager. And the analogy that we were sharing was how is this any different than if Caltrans came to us and said, we need to repay beyond rent on a three eighty and we're going to try to. There's no difference. It's exactly, there's no, there's, it's not, this doesn't belong to us. Um, so but my, putting, even putting that aside, my concern here is the RTC man. The RTC is going to consider this grant application along with many other, I'm sure, very worthy applications for other things. You're shaking your head, there's no, nobody's applying for.
You have to be a transportation of, uh, jurisdiction or two, so, uh, city center.
But there's, I, I can't imagine that there's only that, that, this, this money is sitting there, they have to get it out. Cause this, they said, cause that's the, cause what, what my concern was, was knowing that the fair gates would get installed regardless if the RTC funds them or not. If, my worry is that it would sway them to not award their grant or to, and use them like a therapist. You're like, well, everybody must need it, but if we don't fund it, it's going to get funded anyway because the cities are taxed. So then they so then they would, uh, not award the grant because there's no BART valid there in the RIS. So that, that's my biggest, um, my biggest fear. I think, I mean, I'm okay with authorizing city manager to go and get the actual agreement to bring it back to us. But I think, you know, this could look like, this could look out here, but multiple actors could look like. So I, I, I think we could try to take the gamble a bit to that. Um. That was my thoughts. Other comments from those this time?
Not constantly responding. Okay. So, um. Thinking back in history, uh, this predates me, but I know that when BART first wanted to come to San Bruno, a lot of residents were not happy about it. And they said they're something of group crime to San Bruno. And it's interesting to hear that the, those naysayers were actually kind of right. And it does, uh, enable crime in that area. City did the right thing for, you know, commuting and, uh, getting, uh, mass transportation and you can put it right near commerce, which, you know, makes sense from a programming standpoint, but it also enables people to do bad things. And so, uh, you know, I don't disagree that BART needs these gates. I think they've known that for a long time and they've deferred the decision. And now they're either getting held to the fire. And they are now expecting San Mateo County to put up a lot of money to do something that they should have done all the time. So, uh, BART hasn't been a good partner to the cities in San Mateo County. Uh, nobody in San Mateo County is represented on their board. Um, they are generally, um, well, obviously, but they're, they haven't been a good partner and they need to do this. And I believe that they need to pay for it. Um, I, I don't understand where the mentality comes from that because their stations happen to be in our cities that we have to put up money to support their operation. They've been losing millions of dollars a year on fare evasion. Uh, these gates will allow them to, to stop the bleeding. But I don't think they intend to give us any of that additional revenue that they're going to have. And in fact, they are probably going to move forward with asking for a valid measure that will, uh, as taxpayers incentive and continue to fund their operations. So I, I am absolutely not in favor of supporting, uh, their request for us to pay it forward. Um, they, they need to go out and find grants and if one grant doesn't pay for it, they need to go find another one. But I don't intend to support having this pay.
It's not worth it. I agree with a lot of what Captain Zalas are on this, so. Shocked. It doesn't sound very often, but it's not very often, right? I was trying to, all right, and you know, we got a lot of response here in room two. There's no disputing, clearly, fair gates are needed. The question is, why should we pay for it? In fact, um, in the staffing quarter, great sentence, by the way. Staff continues to question the appropriateness of the BART station of the city to be required to fund a separate regional transit agency's security and fare assurance measure. This topic also, by the way, has already been brought up to the council as a strategic initiative. And it did not obtain consensus to move forward. So what has changed since then? If one of our strategic initiatives failed, we bring it back. And we get to talk about it again, we, we talk about it here. Um, I have additional questions. You know, how many computers use BART's San Bruno station for departures and termination? How many of them are San Bruno residents? I heard from another city that there's something called SB one twenty five that requires BART to install the fair gates at all the station that tied up to some more money. So it comes down to this. I'm concerned about spending San Bruno local taxpayers' dollars to pay for BART's responsibility to maintain their system. Do they maintain their systems to a high standard in San Bruno, their facilities? I don't think. So they don't know the properties in San Bruno that aren't very well maintained. But here they are asking us. And how are we going to pay for this? So I think we would be wasting time to negotiating for, I think, I, I don't see. And I wish somebody could convince me how this is a good use of San Bruno local tax dollars. And so I'm, I'm not in there.
So I'm gonna, because the question was asked about the grants. So under the transportation authority, there's forty million dollars and you have to be a transit agency. So really not everyone can apply. Understanding is BART has to, uh, BART did try a receipt gag, that didn't happen. So that's, something has changed. There is this pot of money that could be, uh, given from the county, uh, the transportation, sorry. And, uh, MTC was going to be the bridge gap without it or not. So the county said, okay, we'll do it, no interest. It's five years. And then the Daly City city manager said, oh, that's not enough. All right, maybe ten years, just to make more power. Should, because you can't, you know, better plan for the worst, hope for the best. So Dunbarden, BART, and maybe a ferry, those are the only group two to three that are anticipated at this time. Doesn't mean something can't be added, you have to be a transportation agency. Nothing else is allowed to apply to that fine. Um, so that's what's changed, is that was thought it could be asked of seventy five percent. Now we found out you can ask for a hundred percent. That's something that's changed too. If it was seventy five, it would have been about four hundred and twenty five, four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for San Bruno. I don't disagree with some of my colleagues about, it just doesn't seem right. And I'm, I'm not even disagreeing, a lot of things don't seem right. But what I, I do have a problem is what it does to our businesses. Meaning the loads, the marshals, the target, the cops. I am concerned about our officer being injured. That is a cost to San Bruno, um, to me. And to me, this is not to say we're going to do it, but it is allowed. The city manager is just ask, can I see the MOU? Let me digest it and bring it back to council and then we decide. This is not committing a one point six. And I think it's talking to city manager because it's kind of these odd moments. Not to put it on him, but to have a final decision, uh, rest with us. And so to me, um, the MOU, I don't think it'd be very complex, you're correct. It would also give us a little more time, um, to see what happens and transpires. But one, if we do say no, then it's a no, it is what it is. So to say if an initiative fails, there is something different, county happened to offer it. TA didn't say it would apply a hundred percent. So some things have changed. Um. Staff doesn't have to install gates, staff doesn't have to purchase. They're done by that and then maintain in the agreement that is set forth by BART. They have to require to do that, that's probably kind of the key. So anyway, that's to answer some of the questions. I, I am just concerned, uh, to my knowledge, the other, uh, I believe Daly City, um, I, I can't guarantee because it hasn't come. But, um, South City, one of the sticking points was, well, we want to see the group. And they just had a city manager do it, but because there's concern for many years. There's, there's dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand a year for ten years. Can we negotiate some other community benefit down the road if we had to? Um, sure, but, um, at this point, just to shut it off, I'm not even looking at the document and seeing what our other neighboring jurisdictions are going to do. I think we'll just say, walk away from the other game, not knowing the full hand and stick. That's my thing.
So. I, I agree. I still want to pay. I mean, it's so like, we're wasting our city manager's time instead of, God, Steve. That's the numbers that they're asking for. But if the council, all right, go ahead and negotiate it, but we don't want to pay. What are you going to be able to tell the city manager right entirely? Our council doesn't want to pay. Staff believes that they shouldn't have. To the staffing board. BART should be paying for this. They're going to get additional income. And they're going to keep it all, they're not going to pay the city back. I mean, it's just a really flawed way of trying to do business, to shed operating costs, to put it out in the cities. And it's not that we don't care about our police officer. That's, that's, that's not even a really good part of an argument right here. BART should be paying. That's, that's what it comes down to, it's their system. They need to take care of their system. We need to take care of our roads. We need to take care of our sidewalks, our water system, like take care of your transit system. And there's ways to get the money. And you probably should have planned it better. So, um, I'm likely to hear it all the way, but it seems like we're just going to be wasting uh, our city manager's time, and you know, we want to be efficient.
Yeah, I, I don't think asking, um, Mr. Salzner, I don't think asking to review an MOU is a waste of time. I think colleagues, it's colleagues can talk over, come up with something. And again, like I said, it's not getting it, it's not paying for it. Also, by taking, this could be another month or two, or it even comes back to us. Then we also would know about the grants. How many people? What's the recommendation from the transportation authority staff to the body, uh, board directors? So that time, I think, also gives us some, because it can go back and the answer is still, hey. The city manager says, this is the deal we're having, and we still say no, then the answer's no. That's it, period. But I think to shut off everything, I, I think is, is not the best for the community, uh, in, that's just, Mr. Sal.
I was just going to agree with my colleague, uh, speaking not demon little bit, uh, because, you know, I think, I think none of us up here um, want to see our officer get hurt and we do not want to see our businesses injured because of the crime that is enabled by having a, an easy escape route. Um. Nor do I believe that fair gates are going to solve the problem because criminals are very creative and will find another way. But, uh, yes, we should do whatever we can to eliminate the potential access that, that bad operators could have. But I, I do think that the bottom line here, not really, should there be fair gates? I think we, we all are going to agree, we absolutely need to have those fair gates in place. We need that to happen. The real question is, is there any scenario where we should have to pay for it? And I think that's where Marty and I are thinking. No. And, and so, you know, if we were to say, okay, let's go negotiate a loan that we've never intended to take, what is the point? So I agree with that one, but it's, it is wasted. And, uh, I, I just don't see any terms, I think, come back and make me think, oh, okay, we're going to do it that way, it's going to be a twenty year loan, then it makes it more palatable. It, it really doesn't. BART needs to pay for this, hence.
And the mayor does not disagree with you. I, I am just saying, we're saying, don't even allow the MOU to come. He isn't negotiating, he's going to do one for all jurisdictions, want to save the county. And then it gives us more time to see what our other neighbors are going to do. Are we going to, we on board or not? Are we only the last ones or the, the ones that aren't doing? Um, do we find out that there's only two applicants for the grants? Well, that makes it very easy. Um, and I think that's what this time of house was to say no means it's done and it's over and I get that. Majority rules, but to not even say, Caligie, send the MOU and you send it to the rest of the managers after their council takes action, which they haven't. So it's going to be in the summer, well, that's when the grants. So that to me is why I'm encouraging to allow the manager just to get the MOU. Whatever's at the time, you know, allows, they come back to us and see what landscape holds. Where are the rest of our partners? How's the grant process going? So that's any, so to me, it's, uh, there's nothing's, nothing's for sure. But, um, I, the board supervisor voted five oh, and, and I think that's at least something going for five years, ten years, it's something. Um, and there are opportunities, I believe. You know, I can't write the check, those opportunities don't count at all. But I believe it's worth us trying to stay in the game a bit longer to see how it plays out. So I think, and I know there's a comment, I don't think, so just want to be sure.
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Okay, with that, uh, is there any other comments in town? Yes, I'm sorry.
You, you, you can make the argument that, well, this is see what the MOU says. The MOU, is there any reasonable expectation that the MOU at its core is going to be anything different than if we don't get the grant, San Bruno for over one point six, three six million dollars?
What I'm saying is, we'll get to hear from other jurisdictions where they go and how they handle.
That was, that was a different argument, you know, you settled, you lined up several and, and.
It's not about the MOU being different, there's a dollar. What I am saying is, you also know in the process about, does it look like we may get money from the county, uh, transportation or not? And so that's what I'm saying as the argument. I don't think the MOU would be different at all. I think it'd be the same for all the jurisdictions with a dollar amount difference. But, and the loan payment, uh, or the payment. But I do say that buying some time gives us the opportunity to see what our other jurisdictions are doing, uh, our colleagues to the north and, um, how the grant process is going. That's what it gives us, just buys us time, it buys us time, so we still keep on the beat with, and then again, even if it's nothing.
Yeah, I wish I could find a way that I think I could agree with you on, on playing game. I mean, this is going to play out regardless of what we say. They get the grant and everybody's happy. This just seems like the county got involved and they should have probably just either, either paid for it or stay out of it. And you're shaking your head, so this is, this is a great night. And you're shaking your head, so this is, this is a great night. No, no, because I mean, basically, everything in San Bruno to improve it costs money and this is a million plus dollars, one point six million, that's not even our stuff. I mean, they could do a lot, they pay streets, but this is their stuff and, and so, let me just go back, I, we were, we're being repetitive now. So, so the thing is, you know, me in the game or not, the game is being played, we're an observer until they tell us they got the grant and we're good. Then, then, we're all good. Thank you, thank you, everybody still, you know, playing the game. But now, we don't need to play. You, in order to pay, play, you have to pay. And I don't wanna pay and I don't think Mike wouldn't want to pay and maybe, you know, I don't know, Andy, but you found that the city wants to pay. And you don't wanna pay, so like, let's stay out of it until it, it's gonna run its course. And then when it gets a grant, then it's, if, if they don't get the grant, then they can think of something else. But, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be in the game this year. I wanna sit out and kind of take a bite. And it's like, see, see how it goes and, you know, we have that opportunity. We don't need to, we don't need to become involved here.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion and I'll add and caveat to it, and just because it, it probably will go down, but I, I wanna do this. That, uh, we ask the city manager or his designated to get the MOU from the county, San Mateo. And then such time that the other jurisdictions in northern county, ca- uh, northern uh, San Mateo County come back as their colleagues and their staff do it. It comes back to us. We also, I think, will have time to see on the TA element. Again, commits us to zero, nothing. It comes back. And then if it's like, you know what? Grants doesn't look good and that means it's on us, the answer is no. If it's like, well, enough time, months has gone by now. And we're about at the award process, you may even have the recommendation at that point in the Transportation Authority, don't know. But that's to me, uh, the motion is to have the manager go forward, to ask for the MOU, to wait to see what our other jurisdictions are doing and how the grant process is evolving. And then bring that back to us for an upper down. That's my mission.
A second?
So motion and a second. Uh, any other questions on the question? I'm sorry. No. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? All opposed?
No.
Okay, three, two, um, that it fails and therefore we will not be asking or working with the county in regards to this. Okay, with that, let's move on to, uh, Council of the Mayor's words. All of us. Um, oh, I, I'll make, I can have a little, uh, on this, um, on, uh, we had an emergency services council uh, meeting and a prep meeting for it. So with that said, the budget did go up for our next cycle. What I mean by that is what San Bruno's contribution is. It went up sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. To give you some examples, it's based on population and based on some tax, uh, role and that, uh, as an example, city of San Mateo went up fifty-three thousand. Millbrae went up, uh, twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty-two, just for some examples. Also had commute dot org, so we approved our budget. Um, but it is becoming more taxing and challenging for the shovels. They get money from the Transportation Authority, probably in the amount of, uh, nine million. And there's another three million plus that comes from private operators. So there were nineteen routes. They've nurtured one, canceled one, so down to seventeen. They're going to put out a letter to say, okay, private sponsor, it is from twenty-five percent, it's up to thirty-four percent. In the next few months, it will be then determined as they say, yeah, we wanna contribute more or no, no, we do not. So depending on what happens with that, they, uh, may have to reduce the routes. So it's becoming more challenging. Um, it's also about the agreement that's coming up, they're trying to redo it. Uh, but currently, they pay about ninety-five an hour and it was gonna go up to two hundred and thirty an hour. Which just was a hard pill to swallow. So hopefully to extend the contract from summer up to a hundred and sixty to a hundred and ninety for another two years. Um, this morning had a meeting at the ALS JPA for the ambulance, uh, as an ad hoc committee, I formed uh, man, city manager with, uh, fire district personnel. We're gonna be meeting with, uh, Supervisor Mueller in Canada, uh, in regards to, um, the fee charges from the county. As an example, San Bruno pays about eighty-two thousand plus a year. And if it went into their three-year contract, we would be paying an additional forty-five thousand each year. Or, uh, we would be up to two hundred and eighteen plus thousand dollars. And going higher after that. So this subcommittee was formed by my direction so that we, because the JPA cannot afford that, pay for it, will come to us locally. And, um, so we will be meeting with Mueller and Canapa to go over it and, uh, probably the county manager as well to see what we can do to try to do that. The county subsidizes fifty percent of dispatch. We obviously don't use police, we use fire and, so, uh, that's it for my committee reports. Uh, that was good, good news, but those are what they are. Uh, comments from council members?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure, um, so, uh, second harvest is tomorrow, but I'm gonna, uh, let the vice mayor tell us all about that. Um, the, I stick it in there. So, um, the, I, I do wanna give an extra plug. Uh, I know we talked about it earlier under announcements, but I do wanna give an extra plug for the, um, the, the workshop on Saturday to learn about the updated fire hazard severity, fire hazard severity zone maps. Um, as the mayor pointed out, this is a, this is a issue that affects, uh, District One and District Two the, the most. Um, and so I, I really want to encourage, uh, residents, um, especially, uh, uh, those up in the hills who are, um, likely to be very, very affected by this to, uh, to attend that meeting. It's available on both in person here in this room and on Zoom. Um, and, uh, it, it, I just think it's really, really important that, that folks attend. And you can still attend that and still go, uh, down to the Mormon church, down to the stuff, there's, there's time to be both, if I had it right. So, um, uh, we were, we were about, we were about that. And that's, I just wanna make one, one quick comment, not necessarily trying to be funny, but the, uh, if you take the, the body of the decisions that this council makes, I think you will find that our vice mayor and Councilor Salazar agree on the vast majority of issues that.
Vice mayor?
Yes.
Please.
I second that, um. And in fact, majority of what we do here, there's, there's a lot of five oh votes and if there's four one votes, you know, we handle it. Um, I think we keep it pretty classy. Uh, so thank you, everybody, for that. Second harvest distribution, Bell Air School tomorrow, two to four P M. Up to three hundred and forty families will be receiving groceries. So whether you or somebody you know needs some help with groceries, or I'll need, come down to Bell Air tomorrow. We can also use volunteers. Uh, volunteers, we ask, please get there fifteen minutes early to one forty-five so we can tell you about, um, how to keep the, keep all of and properly staged. Um, I mentioned this earlier, this was, um, the first meeting, but there's a lot of construction going on, there's a lot of chatter on social media. And people need to remember the city doesn't like monitor social media and if you really wanna find out more, you should probably look at the phone number that's on the barricade, that's the no parking, that's on your street. There's a phone number and a contact number there. Or you could also contact the city under Public Works, your correct line number is six five zero six one six seven zero six five. Um, so just wanna make sure people understand that and it, it'll be tough for a week. Destruction in the avenues goes, went from second to third, fourth, and it's like we reached one of those and it moves on further down the street. So the five hundred block when those streets are done and it's gonna be continuing on for the rest of the year. And then at the very end of all this project, you're gonna have brand new sewer system, brand new streets, also streets that'll go to San Bruno. So be patient with us, a lot of stuff is getting done. Last thing, coincidentally, it's birthday today and at Florida Park, there are fourteen brand new trees in Elmore. So thank you to everybody involved, that the contractor's doing a great job. Have your.
Could be the last one, um, which I would be of my other colleagues. So on April ninth, uh, San Trans held a budget workshop to go over the next tenure financial outlook and a risk in the funding financial strategy discussion, because as we know, everything's kind of up in the air. San Trans has done, Caltrain would be a more unique, uh, budget study session. But also, you know, at the county, you mean, San Trans, they're looking at, okay, but if it's five percent, there are furlongs, everything needs to be totally be on the table. Um, also in regards to Caltrain, I just wanted to say that, um, they are painting, have been painting, it should be done by the end of this month, the station, its walls, et cetera, as well as replacement of the broken panels in the passenger shelter. Uh, and in February, Caltrain replaced every one parking signs or markings of the lot better to better assist the transit police for illegal parking enforcement. Then we, ironically, almost in our BART, is that, um, I did do a tour of BART and they have painted, um, not only the phone booths, because it was all rusty at the bottom on the wall. I also went down both of the emergency exits from the bottom up. Um, I'll send pictures, post, uh, it was horrific. I call it the like escape from New York, is how those stairways looked. They've all been painted, seen clean. Uh, after, two weeks ago, after we had a council meeting, uh, somebody just said, and I wanted to test it. So on that Wednesday morning after the council meeting, I called over to BART, uh, Bay Shore Circle, and I said, let me get those, that I, you know, I guess they were weeds, weeds mowed, uh, and with less than five business days, uh, they were mowed. So, uh, that was a phone call and it happened. So, um, I appreciate that work that both the agencies do, which they need to do better. But I appreciate that they've responded. And finally, zip tour from Channel Two, anybody's watched that on Friday. We'll be coming to San Bruno in July. And I've spoken to the assignment editor from Channel Two News on this and more to come. But, um, we will be, and I mean, uniqueness of it is, it's not like, so is that okay? It's like, we'll, we'll be there. So be prepared. So whether they, uh, had anybody or not, uh, they do make their rounds and we are in July. So with that, and there being no other business at this time, and it's just a little over eight thirty, unless, unless the manager, you want something else, you might go over, we're good. Okay, um, with that, thank you, everybody. Um, thank you for being here, appreciate all your help. And with that, the next regular city council meeting will be held on May thirteen, twenty twenty-five, at seven again, meeting.